Talk to us for like a couple of minutes. They just had some questions about the process, that's all, as usual. So, I can't... All right, if you want to come forward. Like I said, we can't really give you much advice in terms of just beyond listening a bit. And also, I will ask the board to give me permission to have the planners assist you in any way possible going forward. So, it's more of an educational thing for some of the members here. But it has to be quick.
This right here is... This is Old Rowley Road. Our farm is over here. This is...
Introduce yourselves.
I'm sorry, I have to auto-pilot one. This is Gene Pikel. This is the piece of property that the dump is on. Part of the dump is on. The rest of it's up here, but...
The rest of it's town land here. This is our land here.
What happened was, years ago, the town was pushing the dump and they pushed it onto the Pikel property.
Not quite knowing where the property was.
Not knowing where the property was.
Right. Oh, absolutely. Not knowing where the property was. So, they then went and had it surveyed. And rather than have the town have to take everything off because they determined that it had been pushed onto it, they granted... He granted an easement to this. Now, according to the town maps, the things... This has been separated off. They... We sold all the building rights and everything was sold except this portion.
Yes.
And the problem is, is now we want to sell the farm.
Yes.
And the people that are going to buy it, tender crop is going to buy it. And the financing people don't want the dump on.
Well, that's a real surprise.
But it's not separated from the existing lot. It's only an easement.
So, it's kind of an A and R, required guy.
Right.
So, the easement is for the dump to have encroached, to allow the encroachment.
Correct.
And the town...
Introduce yourselves.
I'm sorry, Chris Thornton, an associate member.
And also, he's an attorney as well, so he knows.
But, so, at some point, Pikel...
This is town land.
This has always been town land or at least...
Correct.
Okay. And this is still part of this parcel?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So, and we have to consider whether the town wants to accept title to it? Would we be willing to?
No. We might be willing to, but we know you have to go to a town meeting for that. So, this isn't the point where we want to...
That sabotage is the whole process.
Yeah. So, we're trying to get...
This separated from the rest of it.
So, we went to a surveyor to find out how much it was going to cost to do this whole thing and they want $6,200 to do something. Now, our concern is, what is... Is what they're suggesting, what you are requiring, or is there ways around making it a cheaper endeavor to... I mean...
No, I think, not really. I just think getting more advice and more information on your end is helpful to help you get it out in an appropriate way.
Well, it's a simple matter at our plan, right? I mean, that's all that we're talking about.
I don't know what are they in our plan.
Approval not... The plan... Approval of the plan is not required under the subdivision control. I'd say it's a simple way of avoiding the subdivision process, basically.
And then we can separate the two lots that way?
Yeah, I don't see why not.
I mean, it has already been surveyed.
Surveyor will know what the A and R agreement is. Okay.
It's 49 acres of easement area?
4.9 acres.
4.9, okay.
4.9.
Okay.
So, does the board have any problems undertaking some efforts to contact your board?
What I was wanting to suggest is talk to Larry about what the registry of deeds requires and then find out what the bare minimum necessary for an A and R. And if the board agrees to waive their requirements that go above and beyond the self-explanatory registry of deeds requirements, then I can give that list to them and then they can go and get the cold cover engineer and know that they're getting just the bare break.
Right. We don't have a problem donating it back to the town, but we...
But that takes a process.
It's holding us up right now by to sell the property when, you know, everything looks like it was good.
Well, I know on the tender crop side because I've talked to them and they're ready to go.
Well, yeah. Look at what they've done down there. They've put it in. Looks great.
You might want to put a notation on the plan that this is not a buildable lot.
Yep, okay.
Because it's not, right?
No.
Sounds like you can anyway.
No, you can't.
Nothing can be built in development.
So, we can maybe assist you with the scope to expedite this process.
Okay.
And also, a little more research to find out, again, like you said, whether it's the bare minimum.
Yep.
That's all we can ask.
Just to try to pare costs. It still has to be an official process.
Oh, sure.
What we have in front of us, we're voting on and it has all the specifics that we need.
Yep. Okay. As soon as you're ready, get back to you.
Yep.
Sounds good.
And we will help. Yeah. So, just contact Katrina.
It's easy. We do it all the time.
Yep.
Okay. So, I'm going to be gone tomorrow?
I wish you the best of luck.
Well, I won't get to Larry that quick. He's out on the field today and tomorrow, but hopefully by next week. I work Fridays.
Do you still have my email address?
His already been solved.
Oh, most likely.
Okay.
So, I'm going to make a note and I'll talk to Larry and then I'll email you.
Yes, that would be perfect.
Give you a list that you can get your quote and get going. And the board, I would assume, would be meeting sometime in late August.
Yeah, we just kind of wanted to get you guys on board some...
Yeah, these don't have to be advertised for two consecutive weeks in any public podium.
Okay. Okay. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. It'll be in time.
Take care. Best of luck. Sorry.
Charlie, don't go in in the sun.
Yes. He turned the clock off.
No comment.
Anyway, I guess we're here tonight to see about getting the site plan signed.
Which we have some documents available to sign.
Katrina, what's the...
Katrina has a... Katrina has kind of an amended report on this, right?
Yeah, we filed a Form A today in the obsessive's office in the town clerk's office. And...
Now, this is A in U here.
So, it's filed, but I'm not sure what the... Does the language say that it needs to be filed or that it actually is endorsed?
It's endorsed.
He's referring to condition 21. Do you want to make a comment on this?
Sure. Well, first of all, Larry, I did get a verbal from Larry and he's... He is fine with all the changes that the outcome has made to his concerns. And then Charlie did call today about the A and R. I hadn't read through the decision for a week, but the last condition on it, I think it was something that I suggested the board didn't feel strongly about, but Mr. Patrick had agreed to throw it on there just for, in the name of progress. But if it isn't important, I would suggest the board maybe just take condition 21 off, which requires that an A and R be endorsed before the decision is signed. That's up to the board. I printed out two copies, one with condition 21 and one without condition 21. And then I believe only the chairman will sign these and then the whole board signs the site plans. Which, did you bring a new copy or... I have copies.
There's copies there and I also put copies of the plan with the property lines which are reflected on the A and R plan, which is really would be the best way to sign.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the planners' report for tonight's meeting on B, not B, sorry, on A, it seemed that, you know, Larry recommended changes have been revised and so it's pretty much ready for taking interest aside from whether the board members have a strong condition around this.
Well, it doesn't say that the Form A has to be signed before some of the site plan decisions. So, I don't know if it's...
It's more kind of a bureaucratic thing, though.
I have no...
That's all it is.
He's got to do it anyway.
It's not a substantial.
At least for being filed.
Yeah, it's not substantial. It's not going to change. It's going to file.
It'll be probably on your agenda in the next year, I guess.
Right. It's a timing thing. It's something illegal we can some vote on.
Yeah, either way.
What do you feel strongly, taking it up, signing one with it out?
I mean, I don't think it's a problem we're leaving it in because we can go ahead and approve this tonight.
Because all the other changes have been made and agreed to by the party.
At some point, you have to get an A and R approval.
Is that all it says?
Yeah.
Well, it says it says when.
No, it doesn't say when.
Oh.
It doesn't hold up every other condition.
Okay.
No, it just says the conditions of approval remaining in effect are as follows and it says subject to the submission of the Form A. So, that's not saying when it has to be.
Which you've submitted. You've already submitted, right?
We've submitted. Right, so you've already complied with it.
Okay. People, have any other comments on it?
I have a comment on 20.
Okay.
At least on my version. Maybe there's a more recent one. There's part of 20 doesn't make sense and it's a first sentence.
Katrina, you'll agree with me.
First sentence, the end of the first sentence doesn't make sense. I think, I think basically what we're trying to say is that, that an as-built plan is required if, if they transfer any part of the complex to an entity other than Ipswich Bay Glass, but then the rest of it, I don't know what it means. Or trust of which Ipswich Bay Glass owners, trustees, or other shared interests, so...
Well, Ipswich Bay, I think it refers to Ipswich Bay nothing on the land. There's two real trusts on the land. Controlled by us.
Well, maybe. Okay.
It's just the wording is awkward. The wording is awkward.
It's very, it's very awkward and you really don't know what it means.
I think you just want to clear up the wording. Right. The order of these words is just, just so that it's Ipswich Bay, its subsidiary, if it's transferred from Ipswich Bay and/or it's...
It should be the legal language.
Right.
Like you see at least...
I thought it was the legal language.
Like you see at least...
No, like you see at least... You've done enough leaves and sand.
You really trust the laws of law. Yeah, so it's...
So, I mean, I just think that language is so awkward and...
Could we get how it should be written so that maybe I could run it in here and...
Okay. How it should be written?
Could we just say ownership by...
Or, or any, any other entity related to Ipswich Bay Glass or the owners of Ipswich Bay Glass.
That would do it. Entity would be fine.
So, of the business-led industry complex to an entity other than...
No, to, yeah, to an entity other than Ipswich Bay Glass or any other entity owned or related to. Or any other, or any other entity owned and controlled by, yeah, that's fine.
By Ipswich Bay Glass.
Right.
Which is the overriding.
It's owners and...
Owners.
Yeah.
Successors. We don't need to go...
Successors, subsidiaries, you know.
Could I use the last of... Any other entity owned and controlled by Ipswich Bay Glass owners, trustees, or other shared interests?
Related interests.
Related.
Other shared...
That sounds good. Because you don't need to capitalize interest. That screws it up because it's not which.
Yeah, right.
Can you lay us into a clean copy, please?
Sure, if someone takes minutes.
Clark?
No, I have acrostic.
I thought it was Dave.
David's at work.
Yeah, you're taking the...
Just wrote two notes.
We'll keep writing notes. It's just that I'm not going to write it in by hand and then initial it. I'm not doing it.
There is, there is one other small issue. This is, this is the plan that's filed.
See any registry?
No, this is just, it's just filed before. So, this is property line, proposed property line.
You have to keep this here.
And what we've done is we'd rather keep the contention points on this one. So, and we had talked also about, about cocking a parcel out.
So, what are you saying? That the ones you have here tonight...
The ones I have here tonight show those, show those lines.
All right, get rid of these.
Okay, that's what I was hoping to say.
Well, just get rid of them so we'll look at each... Everybody knows. So, you want to implement that and make that be official?
Yeah, I'd rather make this the official. And this is...
Need to file as amended plan then?
Well, that's what I'm saying. What we've done is we've made some...
Is it dated as such?
It's not filed, it's just got the...
It's not a revision?
It's not a revision. That's what I'm saying. Let's just make this the...
Because it had been discussed, so it is the one.
And all we've done instead of the line going from here to here to show this, you know, and these say proposed property lines, so this doesn't create the line. It's just, and this is what's reflected on the Form A as well. So that the, instead of going from here to here...
I would rather have a plan that really reflects... That's...
Yeah, and that's what we were hoping to, just to cut out.
And this was just my preference rather than have this go this way. Want to go that way.
No, it's cleaner.
And then I thought about setting this property line back to the zoning line at 30 feet issue. I don't know why, but we were making the changes. I said, let's do this. So, those are the two changes that were on this plan. It wasn't one of the original. And it's really all internal, if you will. It's just housekeeping.
I don't have a problem. Does anyone have a problem? Because I think it's cleaner and it reflects the reality. I would rather sign the plan because what our...
No, that's what I was hoping to do.
It's more in line with our purpose for doing what we do.
Right.
One major qualification. The two, taking all of these years' worth of, you know, decisions and trying to combine them into the one. We had all these different...
So, Katrina, I took the liberty of just discussing the property line issue that we discussed earlier.
Okay.
They're amenable to signing the plan without changing the property.
Is that something...
Just to take them on.
And that it's going to be, it's the same dated plan?
The same. I left the same date on. So, I'll just dispose of these plans and these are for you tonight.
Because our minutes reflect this discussion in detail.
All right. Has the board already signed with them?
No.
We need some to go over.
So, we've got two copies, then?
Yeah, there's two copies here.
Do you want to look at that copy?
This one. Thank you, thank you very much for standing up.
I just hope that I can handle you on this court.
You sit right for my...
I wasn't here for that question.
Lucky our chairman could find a chat. All right, this is it. All right. I'll enter a handed motion.
I'll make the motion for proof of the site plan, special permit.
Second with condition.
Dated July 17. Second and five. See? All's in favor? All right.
Thank you.
You can assign that place as well.
Has there space for us to sign it?
Yeah.
Time to time I glass up.
Chris, you voted on that?
I did, yes.
And it's two sets, it's three sheets and two sets.
Can you sign or I'll sign? Okay. It's a question I used to ask when I went to...
Says special permit. Sign all of them? Show just inside. Sign.
Oh, so that's what there's...
You have a second copy?
You're only supposed to have one time that tells me.
Scheduled issue. And as you know...
So, I would be, I would be filing that, that decision with the town clerk and sending you a document. Record at the registry of deeds. I think you'd need to bill minister of her sign and get her certified.
Special review.
But you're not going to record the plans. But you would want, you're going to have five copies.
Right. And if you, yeah, once you need a copy of that, I'll scan it.
So, is there only one?
No, there's two.
We'll just take one. You don't have to scan it.
They will sign if they want. Sometimes people have elected...
Actually, it's easy for you to do. I like to have copies.
So, once, so once they, no, I think the clerk, I don't think...
Trial and error, I suppose.
Maybe the clerk can't sign it until they...
Yep, it's the 20-day...
All people are writing.
Steve, let me borrow the...
I'll try to get it up there tomorrow.
Everybody's waiting to take out a... Start the bill for Massachusetts Medical Marijuana.
You're going to have to have the A and R.
I'm not going to say, but let's do it somewhere.
You're going to have to have the A and R endorsed sometime in August.
Everybody ready? Have you read it?
While you're waiting, stay busy.
Read the medical marijuana.
I would say that, okay. I purposely...
Somebody want all the more trouble?
Get this board settled.
No, but we're going to be discussing it. It's kind of premature to go there.
Something higher.
It's something that's a plus. We're going to work together.
He took a look at what you were giving me and he seemed to be fine with it. I don't know about the mission side.
We're going to file stuff with him and we'll meet him.
So, that's, that's D?
All right.
D.
So, I won't rush too much tomorrow.
Yeah. Why don't you hold on to the...
Can we talk about it?
Unless we're going to... I'll just make sure.
Will you be surprised if I'm taking a case?
So, you take one of them too.
I can't think of... Are you guys doing... So, do you need the outside or anything else? Or they just want, or they want copies?
Maybe I have a pedal.
I was thinking about, could be good on your neck of the woods.
Real.
Yeah.
Everybody hasn't...
Pro shop, that was all just slow the game down a little bit, but...
Hit the ten. Can I pick up, do you back up to that, Chris? Pick up more balls, like?
We would, yeah. I always spend a lot of time on weekends to collect the ball. I don't know if you have a paddle with you.
Sure.
And others, right now, they will... They can tell. And so might Garrett. Jason, who's one of the...
They're French. We should be studying themselves.
They don't have code.
Yeah, well, they make it from this.
I don't know, somebody might call me. One of the, one of the, the plays that I'm going to... The doctor's group are following.
We actually have pieces of their whole, you know, manufacturing operation, right? For dust, for stuff. The old probe, the product. So, they, these things like dust... They have 54 machines. But they're moving out of their building because they...
Clam ready.
I mean, they're... There's just so many of those parts. All of the manufacturing, all of the weapons agreed to, called three, like, Hezbollah.
Have they?
And we actually...
I didn't hear about the site. All their... We want to play.
Is that the...
The people, maybe tougher. Yes, most people. I don't think they're always...
It's pretty long.
Is this one of these...
Most of the thing, you know, you want to...
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I'll never go across...
Yeah, right. I like to leave it at that.
It shows well.
They all be putting in the same place. I can't see the market.
It's a lot shorter than one was. Obamacare, full of mentions. Low with chandeliers, nicely cleaned. It's interesting to me that he leaves the little...
Sure does. You can tell it's valid and it's...
So, there's two sets here?
Yeah, work in progress, which, look, California's had this time 10 years.
Name's got a big challenge. What zone is it on here?
Name's got a...
We don't have the ten.
You have that? Is it very small?
Does anyone know what the proposed fee is? Does it have to be to be, to this department?
Did you check that? Make sure that's all signed?
Yep.
Just say a thing.
More than five.
That's what we're going to do. It could be a problem.
Well, thirty-five. The benefits.
You're all looking at the section?
Yeah, thirty-five.
Did that right.
When it...
All the heads.
All right.
So, I think we're all set.
I think so.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to the next. All right, we're going on to the next thing.
Hopefully, we won't be back for a couple of years, so maybe...
We'll see you next meeting.
Hopefully, we'll be back sooner.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
See you, Charlie. Take care. Thanks for going out. And say, you thank us for going out the club.
Yeah, it's good. And we just rented Building Six. We're on something that started it, so it's full speed ahead.
Voting.
Are you chairman of the, what's the, what's the business, Chamber of Commerce?
I was once at Ipswich, so that was logged out of us.
You should be around. If it wasn't. Briefly, we need to set a date for public hearing. 111 new report, Turnpike. Do people know where it is?
Yep.
I know, David, you know where it is. You personally know where it is, Steve? I know, Gene.
Is it right next to the Grant Place?
Is it right next to the grand place, is that number one?
It's right across from-
I think it is.
It's right across-
I do know where it is, yeah.
It's right across from Don River, there's a great house.
Triangular, tall, gold, uh-
Very tough triangle.
It's kind of like a, a right triangular lot, with a house that's very close to Route One.
Yes.
It is a lot that, some businesses have tried to make, make it into something, could be another successful business under one. Rob Nixon, who's done a lot of, he's done a lot of working, Rob, you know, who lives here, has assisted with this new prospective, oh, well, older, is he, right?
Looks like it's, this is deep, isn't it?
I saw the deep, right. As you know, Katrina gave us a ton of information on it that actually is really important. Before we had the hearing, there are some, some issues that are a little complex, other ones, like, they need a variance, there's obviously a lot, you know, for the parking, that is required by zoning, so. So, anyways, the bottom line, they need site plan review by us. In some respects, it's a difficult site, in other respects, the use, I think, is a valuable design, that's just my opinion.
There may be a site distance issue, I don't know, we could look at that.
It always is on that hill.
Well, yeah, on the hill, cars coming down, and they're talking about trucks pulling out of there.
I looked at the site plan briefly, and I think that's why it pushed the engine all the way down in the houses.
Right. I think-
And the type of business it is that, like-
This parcel, yeah. Would you agree with this parcel, because unless he expands and buys adjacent parcels, it's self-limited. And how much can go there?
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's a very low light area over there. He's talking about storing fuels and everything like that.
Inside. Yeah, you're right. These are all issues, that's why we're, that's why we're having the review. You have the information, I think we have to hold them to, not hold them to, but I think, in, in terms of the disclosure as, as to what the use is, what's going to be stored inside, and, and, and I guess the scope of the business. And the building inspector has been in dialogue, and, and of course, denied it by right, for the reason they're saying it's packed. The building has to be either torn down, or is it, he's gonna tear it down and rebuild it?
Yeah. You just got the permission.
You can't really-
There's no delay.
Just, just, yeah, just to rehab, that building would cost as much as building a building.
How much land is available?
It's almost, a little over an acre.
Anyway-
So, Mr. Chairman, before the public hearing, if you do schedule it, I'll be sending out the, all the applications, all the information to town departments for their input. Would you like Larry to start reviewing this, after we receive, he, he has estimated $2,000 at least to start off. So, after we've received money from the applicant, do you want Larry to start reviewing it, so that we have something for the public hearing? From him?
More expedition, it's a, it's a more-
Shouldn't you ask first?
Well, I think the public hearing is more effective, I mean, you want him, you want, the question is, you want to set a date like a month from now? It's not the possibility. A lot of times, yeah, we have, a lot of times, we hold a public hearing. A lot of times, we have done it in this fashion, and click those, this is, whatever, the ten, it's like, applicant comes in, gives us, you know, kind of a summary of what they're doing, and then we set the public hearing, the applicant chose not to come tonight, that's why all this information is in front of us.
It's actually, yeah, you should probably get the public hearing to discuss it.
Well, I mean, I think we could go, we can go ahead and set a date for the public hearing.
Okay. Any other question?
You have the whole one, so.
You want to wait for Larry, you want to wait for Larry to restart reviewing, after, after we get the presentation, or?
The only reason, not to, not to, to, the only reason to ask Larry to wait is because, you know, an issue could come up where the applicant might decide not to go forward with it.
Just to withdraw.
And, uh, in that event, you wouldn't waste it, $2,000 to review that, the plan that he's not going forward.
No, I was saying that in my mind-
That's happened before.
Yeah, in my mind, it kind of protects the applicant, so the applicants are not to try bringing-
Should I not ask for money from them, then?
Well, which I know-
He must have bought it for that purpose, I mean-
No, I, I think-
No, he's, he's coming for that purpose.
I think once you start, just give us a present, I think that's just the kind of presentation.
Then present, and then you know what's important.
Right. Enough detailers already here, and William Holt from, what, the store, what, Land Tech, whatever, has done all the pre-works of the, the applicant already has a fair amount of money into the process, but he doesn't have the official, kind of, you know, qualifying public hearing notices or something, or that. I think we need, you know, I think we need to have the first hearing after the, it's been advertised, before we start asking for checks, you know, before reviewing.
I mean, it, you know, makes the process a little longer, but I think it's a more orderly way to go.
Only by like, one meeting, I-
I think everyone all envisioned what it's gonna be when it's completed, uh, you know, the guy down the street, it's Jaws, Joe, or something, uh, so he's gonna be, I suppose, diet, uh, nutrition, all kind of other things, yeah, and, uh, he's gonna be holding a lot of vehicles out of that, I mean, all the time. But it, it's, I got a problem with the, you know, it's, you're talking about, so watch the street, a lot of people coming in and out of there, I mean, how many accidents you got a day from between McDowell's and Darkin Dawes coming up, there's numerous accidents there.
Well, that's why we get feedback from the police.
Yeah. Well, I think, I mean, you're right, it's just a, a timing thing here, and what the timeline is for the applicant, it seems like it shouldn't matter, I mean, $2,000, if you were to pay that upfront, it would go into the, the fund, and if he withdraws the petition, that money, and we never do a review, then that money would be refunded, right? So, it might help him to expedite things, or keep it moving along to take the $2,000 fee, yet I don't think it makes sense to send it off to Larry till the public meeting, because something could come out of that public meeting, that makes him revise what his intentions are.
Katrina's point was that he would come into the meeting with already a review, and might expedite the process.
It is my feeling that they would like to move on this.
Well, 'cause they've been sitting on it now for-
Not to put words in their mouth.
I know that they've been in contact with, uh, well, I talked to Mr. Nixon, and, and in contact with the building inspector for all these six months.
And I just, just from that point of view, I think it is more efficient to have Larry review it and have his results at the public hearing.
I'd be interested to see what the conservation-
But again, you've got the risk of spending money that, you know, they try and withdraw, but that would be my recommendation.
It's up to the board, that's what I'm-
Just to take the $2,000 and start-
It's up to the board.
I think we should have the public hearing, and then, then ask Larry to personally review it.
You know what?
That's what, I think it's more orderly, it's more orderly, and, yeah, I think there's some reasons for doing that. Doesn't really delay the process that much.
No, because if, if the process is, if it's a well-done application, we're moving quickly on it, yeah. It's not as com- it's not that complex, but it has some issues, but it's not a complex, because it's not complex at all.
At what point does, I mean, has the Conservation Commission already looked at it, delineated the wetlands, and?
Yeah, he's had the wetlands, the wetlands.
Oh, so.
It's for them to go and do a concurrent process, you know, and try to-
Okay.
Have they done that?
It's up to them. We recommend it, you recommend it.
Yeah, we usually keep our processes separate, so we, we don't really know-
But, but they try to keep parallel at the same time?
Yeah, sure.
Because otherwise, it can delay the, you know, it's ridiculous.
Stormwater permit is roughly in terms of-
Everyone's got to do one or the other, it's just that, site plan's got to, well, that's their, their concern, not ours.
But, but Mr. Holt from, you know, who did this work, I mean, is well aware of the rally process and stuff. He's had a lot of stuff here, but he knows the Conservation Commission very well, so he hired the right guy. He's kind of hired the right guy. It's, you know, it's not someone who's- All right, all right. So, that's why, that's why, so we just said it, I just want to bring it up, Katrina wanted to bring it up.
Well, you have to set up the hearing date?
Yeah. Well, it has to be a month from now, Katrina, right, you got it, here? Uh, while we're talking about dates, well, should I bring up? We have a modification to our agenda, is that going off track?
We, yeah, but why we set-
Because we can do both, you want, okay. All I'm saying is that, to do the planner's evaluation, or we're gonna be doing that tonight, we may have to, even if we set this a month from now, we may have to, at the end of our meeting tonight, set an interim meeting.
We're not gonna be doing that?
No. So, uh-
I'm, I'm good on the 14th of the 21st.
Of August? 14th is fine with me.
Yeah, me too. On the 14th?
14th of August.
I had a 21, but it looks like a, uh-
I can do either.
I can do either.
I can do either. Where are you gonna be, someplace nice?
Just wanted to see this one.
So, we can do 21.
It's up to the board, that's why we're discussing it, whatever.
21, of course.
Whatever you want to do.
I'll be here.
Okay, 21st, I guess. All right? 21. Might give us some time, like you were saying, Chris, to take the concombs, and get a hearing in front of that.
Sure, all right. I just, actually, I was more unaware of the, how the two boards work together, but I understand what you're saying, that they really work concurrently, but apart.
Yes. There's a lot of-
Just for the stormwater permit, that's the one thing that's there.
We really overlap on the stormwater.
Okay, which is something that I need to totally familiarize myself with, because I'm not, uh-
It's new to me, too.
Yeah, the Conservation Commission really administers state law, whereas we administer both, you know.
Right.
Even though they have a local bylaw, they're really mandated by the state to do, to do what they do, and also, the stormwater management permit is also mandated by federal law through the state into the local. Okay. 21st?
21st, yeah. 7:30?
That's okay?
Good.
So, you'd like to, need to hold off on asking for money, but just send it around to town departments for their comments?
Yes. And also, just, I would think, just review again with the applicant, as to what occurred tonight, and make sure that there's no changes in his, what he's going to do, and go forward with this.
Oh, yeah, no, they're, they're, yeah. Just have no hesitation on that, right?
That's what I said. They couldn't expose, they're gonna waste $2,000. So, we're ready to, um, the only project, our project updates, you can see, um, I'll make it brief. Uh, the latest is that the Butters and the, Dick Kern, the, I guess, the facto representative from all the Butters that's here would lay, uh, want to, uh, receive permission from town council on Monday night. Obviously, I was far away, but I can see the email today. Well, Katrina updated me, and also, I, you know, I was in touch with Debbie anyway before I left, but I spoke to Debbie before I left, just after the fourth of July, I think, Monday, or whenever that goes. The 8th, I spoke to Debbie about this project, uh, town administrator. So, there's some question, the Butters have questioned our process, so they want some input from town council about whether or not we could, um, do it as a minor modification, and I'll just leave it at that. From our end, I think that we took something that had started in 1986, went in 1989, and another part of those, 1991, four, so it was, it's a series of special permits, one from select, from, from appeals, from the previous planning boards, so there has, it's a history here. I think we were trying to, to-
Haven't we already approved, this is a minor modification?
Right. We did, so.
Yeah, more than we see it.
Um, no, that's why I'm just leaving, I'm just, I'm, I'm reporting.
But so, it's gonna be reviewed by town councils, obviously.
Right. And that was as of what, Monday night?
No, it's-
Is that Monday night, right? So, that's that, the other thing is that, um, you know, we, we talk about, we talk about definite-
You don't know the project?
I don't, I don't, I'm thinking, I'm thinking Market Basket.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was saying, yeah, Demoles, um, yeah, Market Basket, so. And obviously, um, our goal in starting to, to take parties that weren't working together, we got them to work together, and, um, and solve the problem of, I think, in terms of, uh, having them be more prudent in their, um, enforcement of some of the previous conditions, you know, like litter, uh, be aware that we'd be watching for sound, lighting. But the major thing was, uh, the visibility aspect of it, you know, like putting up the fence, and extending the berm, and making the berm so the fence is now even, so the sight lines are improved, in terms of having, especially in winter time.
Well, I mean, I think it was a very good resolution of the problem.
So, and I, I think, Mr. Kern, uh, I think has done a good job in the sense that, in keeping track of the history, and keeping track of the details of the project, and, and also working with Katrina, and I have emails from, uh, Mr. Kern that appreciate, you know, Katrina's professionalism, and attentiveness, and responsiveness, to all, you know, his, um, questions, so. I see those kind of emails, so I think there's, I, you know, we're, we're two separate boards, and I think we'll just go to, you know, it's a learning process, and if we learn anything out of it, then we can apply it in a better way to future projects, but I think, as Phil knows, I mean, Market Basket was unique in many ways, to have a, a box store like that in a small town. It's kind of a unique thing, you know.
And we were essentially modifying a landscape, you know, essentially, that's what we're doing. It's not like we're approving new uses or new buildings, so.
And I think, you know, we cannot dictate, if you look right now, I mean, just to give an analogy, you can see that Bradford Tavern is also, you know, every place in their septic system. It's not unusual for that kind of, you know, food use in any respect, and we know that Eltavado, this has to, you know, so, we work with the Board to help, to appoint the Board to help, when it's on the plan, they have the right to burn it in a certain area, and that's what they did, and unfortunately, that caused cascading issues with, by previous conditions, that's what, so, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just, so, Kern is asking the town selectmen to review the decision to approve that landscape plan as a minor modification, is that what, I, you, 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 I missed the first opening on what this, uh-
The smart package.
What comment you're making.
I'm just reporting that town council will be reviewing our, um, decision in, in the respect of whether we could, um, approach this, approach this, what, problem, and, and its resolution as a minor modification.
So, it's an, it's after the fact review, so, it's a done deal as far as, I think, we're concerned.
So, I'm just reporting what's happening, and I will ask-
If I could just add to that?
Sure.
I, you know, I, the town administrator feels that the town council has said that there are no cases where a special permit can be modified without a public hearing. Most planning boards modify special permits as we know all the time, and some are minor, and some are major, you vote on whether it's a minor or major, if it's a, if it's a substant- substantive change.
Substantive, yeah.
Substantive, thank you, change, um, for me, um, it needs a public hearing, or it, or if it affects the neighbors, it may need a public hearing, and so, but the question is, not whether the, the planning board aired on, whether or not this is a major, minor, they feel that all changes need a public hearing.
I would be very interested to see that legal thing.
Yeah, so, you know, as chairman, I'm always open to learning, I don't think-
Yeah, sure.
I, I think, if they, if they hadn't put a new septic system, and I don't think any of this would came to light, actually.
That's a great point, that's a great point.
Because, I mean, actually, it's gonna be a, a big improvement for other neighbors, because they extended it, and they put more trees, and they're also getting the fence out of it, too.
Right.
Which will stop some of the noise.
And I think Demoles, I think it should be said, was very cooperative.
Oh, oh, I couldn't read more.
I mean, maybe it took them a long time to get there, but-
That's, I think, the issue of the neighborhood and their representatives. But it's also the issue in, in respect to the previous conditions, that's taken us a lot to get the response.
And a public hearing would have dragged that out.
I mean, certainly, none of it was a battle, I mean, everything was agreed upon with everybody.
I mean, I quite, quite a, a few meetings, with quite a lot of participation from the Butters, right?
Yeah.
A lot of participation.
No question about that.
All right, I don't really, does anybody have anything else to say on that? Katrina, give them?
But do, do you, does the board want to consider having Larry check any of these, or do any inspections back there, um, that neighbors did express interest on?
I, I think-
I will buy it in the other days, and, you know, it's progressing, you know, it's, there's a lot of ways to go.
Well, I mean, that's-
Maybe we could assign a, a board member to, to go out there and, and-
Yeah, if they think, if we think we're having some disparity between what was told to us and what was agreed to, and what's really happening, we need to get on top of that.
I mean, I think we all show up down there, don't we?
I don't.
You don't?
I don't usually, I don't usually walk in the back, man.
We do.
But I just took a, I drove around when I was, that show, the other day.
So, what Katrina is mentioning is kind of-
You drive up, yeah, I guess you can.
Like, the concombs, sometimes, you know, tells a member to go along with the administrator, to look at sites, we don't have a lot of- We don't have a lot of site visits, but when they're necessary, like a case like this.
But you were in, you were there for the original, my good-
For instance, there are trees that are, specific trees they talked about, right on their property line, some are hanging into the property. They want those removed, I'm not sure the Planning Board is aware that they wanted even the dead brush in the forest that's not near the leaching field removed. And so, there's, um-
I will continue the dialogue for a while, you want me, I'll go. As Chairman, I'm going to have to bottom last one.
Yeah, I do think that we need ongoing meetings to make sure it's all done according to how everyone-
And I'll be interested, I'll also, and also have to answer any, I'll have to answer any questions, you know, that ensued from the review of the, what? Town Council. All right, it's hot, so I want to move on.
It's following the-
My updates, how, how we resolved with countrywood, we named it. Eyes with the stack time and end times, is that, no?
Oh, the residences, yeah.
With the residential-
You may not have been at that meeting, where we talked about it.
That's what I missed, because I stayed home.
Yeah. They did, they gave us a half an hour on Saturdays. We also ended it.
Have you heard anything since?
No, but there have been several complaints, but the Highway Surveyor, myself, and the police chief talked about it, and the, you know, Highway Surveyor went out there and checked, there's a little damage to the road, and, but it's right as in the condition of the Planning Board's approval that anything that is ruined will be fixed, so.
Why is that?
No one is worrying about it, but they're aware of it, they will fix it.
And I think that's going to be ongoing.
That was in a Butters complaint.
Keeping dust down, you know, they water it, it's that whole thing. I feel like, you know, you live near, I mean, these projects-
I haven't heard of them, you know, earlier than they said, that they've been starting at seven-thirty on Saturdays. They've always wrapped up early on Saturdays, so I think the concession they made while it was in line with what they were doing anyhow.
Okay, yeah. And if, you know, if anybody notices dust in this dry weather, they need to water the road, they need to do the best practices for this kind of construction, that's all.
I drove, just because I drove out this way, I zipped through the parking lot area, I mean, they run a very tight chip over there, it's a really neat job site, and, you know, I can't imagine.
It's big, it's shit.
You know, nothing, it was true, but-
Well, if any project is such, you're, you're bound to get neighbors that are, that are upset about it, and so it's on-
It's funny, I left my brothers house the other day, on Brothersville Street, and I was going home, and the truck pulled out, and I was eating dirt the whole way down the street.
Well, they need to water, and they need, you know.
I do want to say that the Police Department and the Highway Department have been awesome, they've really been helping the Planning Board out.
It's nice to work, and that's been one of my, working with other boards makes me feel like we got a sense of others. All right, any other project updates, Jean? All right, here's the, you want to give a quick background discussion, I mean, back, background to the board, how we ended up having this on the agenda?
Oh, I thought you were asking Jean again.
No, no, I'm sorry, no, I'm not, marijuana, we're on marijuana. Give me a break now, it's freezing.
Should I, should I go over to your room, or is it over for you, for me?
I was just in-
Oh, Amsterdam. You were researching, were you?
I was doing research for this discussion last night.
Well, as you all know, we legalized medical marijuana in Massachusetts, and the, I think in May, the state finally came up with its regulations, which meant that people were free to go start trying to find a place to locate and open their medical marijuana dispensary. Because there have been inquiries, the zoning review committee, which is made up of two Planning Board members here, and I staffed it, and then two ZBA building inspector and a Selectman, have, are possibly going to propose a moratorium on medical marijuana dispensaries for Raleigh. That'll just give us a year to write regulations, we can't, you know, have a moratorium for any longer than that, I don't think. That's what all the other towns have been doing, the Attorney General seems to approve it, so we figured that would be the, the best step. However, the Town Administrator called and said that the Chairman of the Selectmen is interested in talking, having an open dialogue with the Planning Board on the subject of medical marijuana dispensaries. So they, she said, I, I would like the Planning Board to, to maybe discuss this. The Planning Board will definitely be discussing any moratorium proposed, because when we adopt zoning, of course, the Planning Board has to make a recommendation at town meeting. But this is a prior discussion, to just really get a handle on how people feel about medical marijuana dispensaries, I guess. And so, to that end, she, she suggested the July twenty-ninth meeting is a time to possibly meet with the Selectmen to talk about medical marijuana dispensaries.
So joint meeting, or just one or two of us going?
She, I think she's, either or.
That's part of the question, so, yeah. We really can't go, it's either all or nothing, it's either all or several, you know.
Two or-
We either have a joint meeting-
Well, three is a, is a whole-
Yeah, we either have a joint meeting, or just a couple of Representatives from the Planning will go to the Selectmen's meeting.
Right.
I think what they want is a discussion, jointly, so two members of the whole thing.
Do you feel, do you have a joint meeting, or is that, I can't see it.
No, I think the law has been, the law's been passed, it's been promulgated, I think, the law is, it's going to happen, it has happened in other states.
Well, the, the meeting they're asking for is to discuss the moratorium?
Right.
Okay, I mean, it seems inevitable that it's coming-
No, not necessarily.
Some of the details in our feelings, like, you know, where, operating hours, I mean, how would we, if we were going to do some internal regulations, like how would we approach that, and what, what do we feel is appropriate for a small town like Raleigh? You know, a town like Raleigh that has, you know, well, has an elementary school, but on that, I mean-
Can I speak for a moment?
Yeah, sure.
I don't see anybody operating up a medical marijuana place in Raleigh, it's just too small of a town. Not because it's a small town, they're not going to get the business, I think they're going to go to the big cities.
We've got a group ninety-five going through Raleigh.
I know, but it's, I, I just don't see-
Newbury and Georgetown, one is going in at Georgetown, Newbury, I thought was ready to locate in that plaza that's right on ninety-five, until the Selectmen got wind of it, and then I guess the, the owner did a turn around.
What, Kirsten Plaza?
No, the, the newer one, but the, um, the fertility clinic place.
You know, I, I don't know, I don't know why they just don't hold it to a, they should have the drug stores.
I can think of any that's signed.
You know, pharmacies distribute the medical marijuana, I mean, it's a medical thing, why don't the pharmacies do it? That's what they should, instead of opening up these-
Well, but that's not the way the law is set up.
And also, corporate shareholders tend to, that, you know, someone like CVS is beholden to.
I mean, I, I agree with you, I think that's unlikely, but there's, I don't think there's any harm in it proposing a moratorium to see what develops, see what the state regulations are, you know, that sort of thing.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think-
I have a feeling the Selectmen are trying to get a feel for, well, maybe there's people out there, there's, you know, cancer patients need it. And so maybe, I, I did look at the voting records, and fifty, more than fifty percent of people in Raleigh voted for it.
More than, almost sixty.
And so I think they're trying to get a feel on, do we need a moratorium, should we just come up with regulations there?
Well, you can, you can only have five in all of Essex County by the state law, so.
I think they want to give direction to the CRC, actually, as a result of this moving in, say-
Well, we're not going to, you're not going to have one in every town, because that's prohibited, that would be prohibited by state law.
Right.
You can't, you can't go more than five, you know, in entire county.
Well, it's, well, maybe we could talk Georgetown if they have it, you know. Yeah, but, you just, you just don't know, Steve, you don't know who's going to come down the road and where they want to place it, that's-
You want to be there.
Who's going to come down the road and retell this?
Well, you know, one of the arguments for a moratorium is, I mean, it seems to be an argument for, for going forward with a moratorium is that we would have to hold a public hearing before we propose that. And if there are people, we get, you know, input from the public as to whether people would like to have this dispensary in their own town, or whether they don't want it, you know, that's a-
Again, I don't, I'm not sure why the Selectmen want to talk about it.
Right, but I think that-
It's an educational process, this is new, a lot of things that happen, you look at the new health law, right? It's supposed to be, they gave a one-year moratorium, but now, federal government-
Well, part of it.
Part of it, because people are, they don't know it, but part, yeah, there's other reasons, businesses didn't want to implement it.
They have a problem with the forms of business that you fill out.
So, what I'm saying likewise, I think the more education of the public, the better for people to make decisions, that's all. And for me, you know.
But, you know, and what I'm saying is a public hearing process would, would help us, you know, evaluate that, so I think that's the answer to it.
Who knows, I don't know, we all may need a little marijuana for our sicknesses.
Right. Well, it'll probably be completely legal in a few years.
Yeah, I think it may be, yeah.
Well, we're already, we're already limited in where they, where they can go.
What do you mean?
Can't go down next to my house.
Well, you go-
Because it's residential.
Yeah, they could go in a commercial zone.
Commercial zone. No, I think we're all-
But they could go in the central district, they could go-
It has to go in a commercial zone?
Well, it is a, is a commercial activity, unless it's a-
It's a business.
Change in a non-conforming use, I guess, but-
No, I think, we're set-
It could go anywhere if we don't regulate it, right?
Yeah, but we're set in a location as a board, and we're set in all the hours.
You should have gone to one, to retail use, so why, how would they start a retail use in the outline?
Oh, that's, that's, that's going to be a tough one, I think.
I mean, it's a solid, so it's a-
Twenty-one, and it's not categorized as an in-home business. This is the-
Yeah, for my capacity, yeah, why not?
So, I mean, I, I don't know, as a, as a group-
You're selling electricity.
I just want an agreement tonight coming out, wait, I just want an agreement tonight coming out as a joint meeting, or we have two members that would like to go, just like, and-
Well, I don't know, since I'm on the ZRC, I don't know.
There's one, so Cliff, who else?
I'll put on.
All right, Steve goes.
Wednesday night, is it?
Yes.
Wednesday night, Wednesday night.
All right. And I don't think it's about individual opinions. You know, I think it's about our, our positions on a board, you know, a regulatory board. You know, I don't think we can digress into, everybody has opinions on this subject, I mean.
We need wider parking spaces.
I can think, there's a lot of interesting comments in there, I'm a handyman.
You can have your caregiver pick it up, you're ill, you can have a caregiver pick it up.
I mean, I think it's, you know, the medical, I guess, medical, generally, the medical effectiveness of it has already improved. I mean, you don't have to, you don't have to regress to why these things are even being passed.
No, it's, it's the law, so, right.
You know, people have chronic pain, and I have a friend who, that chronic pain is chronic pain, and it's, you know, it's a horrible thing to live with. A lot with chemotherapy and cancer, I mean, and I think the aging population, this is probably a good time to open a dispensary, right? I mean, the demographics, but it's a good reason, I guess, to stay healthy, or not stay healthy. Moving on. Moving on. We need, so Cliff and Steve, all right?
Yeah. And I am not going, because I would be taking that day off.
Right.
Cliff, what's the ZRC, Voting Review Committee, anything?
Speaking of zoning, briefly, the, the state, it was kind of interesting, re, the state may be throwing out the A and Rs and, as the bill, so, that's kind of, I thought-
Well, you know, they've been talking about that legislation for, for at least a decade, so, you know, not to get excited about it.
If it actually happens, anyways, Katrina has some interesting, two bits of, she had an email and also this article, but this article goes back to May sixteenth of this year, and they're still messing around with it, so.
Yeah, really, that is kind of, so. I, it, yeah, based on that, some are really getting rid of the A and R, or at least they're considering getting, and then the impact fee, I thought was something that is, I think, interesting to see if that makes it in there, because I think that's a lot of power to, for the building, I reckon.
Getting these super majorities.
Yeah, and there certainly is, some states have come a long way, and I know in many of the towns in this state, really, are working hard for public use, you know, when some of it makes a lot of money and some do, or they want a better middle return, they want improvements in parks.
Yeah, that would be a nice part.
For parks built, I know when, I mean, it depends sometimes on the magnitude of the development, I mean, if it's a multi-billion dollar development versus something like a million dollar versus ten million, or something like that. One, yeah, two lots subdivision versus something like a country club, but if towns, if it was in the law, it would make it harder for the proponents who do these things to fight it, because I know in the past, and I've asked for things, I asked for things way back into rulers, and I shouldn't, I was on the Conservation Commission, and basically was rebuffed, and, no. As simple as that, no. You know, if it's in the law, it's going to be yes.
Well, at least you're giving more leverage.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, that's pretty, I mean, and this is kind of a quick pro quote, you know, development interests get something, and towns get some benefit as well. Any other correspond, oh, appointment of Community Preservation Committee, Cliff has been on the CPR, CPC forever?
Yeah, a couple, a couple of years, so.
Who did that before that?
Stuart.
Oh, Stuart.
He did it a while, Stuart G.
I did it for a while, and then-
I guess I was thinking a Planning Board member has been there forever, because the C-
Well, it has to be, it has to be a Planning.
Yeah, because when it first, CPC, we were one of the first towns to go there, right?
Yes, we were.
I mean, I'm, Cliff doesn't want to go.
No, I do want to go.
Okay, great.
It's the one town board that has money, as you say, and, yeah, not to digress into their business, but what, what are they planning on doing with what they, what's been put aside for? Are they still amassing the budget, or are they, are they having projects that will be invested, are they?
Uh, I don't know, we, the other good thing about being on this committee, you only meet like about two or three times a year.
Uh-huh, okay.
We begin in September. I'm not sure what's on the agenda.
Well, they pay, they, you know, it's like, there's money that, the debt on properties that were purchased back to-
Brad Street Farm was something they did, they've got a whole list on the website.
Okay. They, they can, they can buy land for conservation purposes, they can, they can buy land for recreation purposes, historic renovation, and, and affordable housing, so basically-
Which includes senior houses?
Yeah, and it could, and so we also-
They must have purchased Hansel Hill that night.
No, that, that was a separate, the Open Space Committee.
That was before-
On five, for, yeah, we had to go for a special.
They did joint purchase of land down on-
But the Brad Street Farm was purposeful.
Rough Mass, what's it called, Rough Mass, it was sold with the bottom on, and-
The bond for growth type, I think, right.
See, what Jean is alluding to, and this is, and this is important to know, is that we don't, the town just doesn't spend and buy stuff. Sometimes this is, and you can correct me, but I just know from the Pingu Farms, that the state used to have grants that were predicated on the town kicking in a certain amount. So you trigger things, if the town, the town kicks in, then the state kicks in.
Right, that was the westerly side of the Pingu Farm, but the easterly side, which is across the river, was P A hundred.
Yep, that's a good part of that, and that's used a lot, for different things.
And then it's also used for historical things, like maintaining the records of the town, and redoing some of the records under the clock for the church.
Yeah, I mean, otherwise-
There's a list of, like, historical things that were done.
And they wouldn't have got fixed?
Yeah.
Yeah, they never would have gotten done without this, I think, so, and it allows them to take advantage of the matching funds when they're available, because if you don't have money, you got it first, but you can't get the state's money.
No, when it first started, and the towns that are coming in too late, some of them are going, like, we messed up, because what's matching now, twenty-five percent?
Uh, it takes higher than that.
Not much more, I don't think.
It started out, started out at a hundred.
At a hundred, a one-for-one, and we were first, and this one-for-one gave us a lot of money.
Yeah, right, right.
Now towns are going, well, we would like some of that money, but not going to get as much.
Definitely just voted in the N S A, which is also-
Kind of late, get on the bandwagon.
Well, certainly, I know. So, we'll send Cliff.
I need a vote on this.
I'll, I'll normally make a motion to not make one.
Second. All's a fair.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Can we bring that, bring our organization up again?
Mister Chairman, I just read this, I don't see anything in here that would stop the, would stop the-
Yes, yeah, that's, I've made it soon.
All right.
I, I, I think, well, I'll, I'll describe why, yeah, I want to, I just articulate on that briefly, on why, on the, on the agenda item. It may be more of a specific-
What are we talking about?
I'm, I'm sorry, the agenda item which comes, like, you know, the evaluation, performance evaluation of the plan. After one year of service is really important to me, and it's really important to me in the context of some of the work that's been done by the Personnel Board and the Selectmen in terms of just trying to take the non-union positions and, you know, and value them in the way that they should be valued. The planner position, obviously, for the Planning Board is new, the professional planner is new, we never have. So, I think this performance evaluation is particularly important, because it's new, it's a new position, so it's a new, and the process is such, I have, I received an email today that the process is the most specific process in terms of, I think, it's a public process, and you have the evaluation sheets, and you also have, Katrina did a self-evaluation, kind of a self- sheets, and you also have, Katrina did a self-evaluation, kind of a self, you did a really a summary of what your accomplishments, in the context of the job description that we hired, so, which I think is important, I mean, you hire somebody with a specific job description, and how well have they fulfilled those, and then you need to rate them on that. The point is, we need to put it on the agenda as a public hearing, a public process, and not as an executive. The only portion, the executive session for purpose of employee review, is really not what we would have been doing tonight. The executive portion is only for one thing, and that's filling out that form, that's it. No more input, no more discussion, discussion is all public. So I would rather put it on the agenda personally, as such, that's why. So I made that decision, because I want this process to be formal, and I want it, and I only received this email at four o'clock today, so that's why. At four oh five today, I just come in, came in from the airport, and I'm reading my emails, and there it was, so I have to make this decision. Does anybody have any comment? I don't know.
Sounds good, mate.
I made the decision.
When do you do scheduling?
I would like to, that's a great question, I would like to schedule it in two weeks.
In two weeks?
No. Can we, or I'm doing, what is, can you look again? Because I would like to devote an open public hearing to it, and I think it's at the request of the town planner.
Want it to be a public hearing?
Well, it is going to be public anyways.
Do you want it advertised?
No. You know what, I don't mean that.
Public party.
Yeah, public meeting, it's part of our reg...
It's an open...
It's part of our regular business, open meetings.
How are we doing the twenty-first?
I would like to do it as soon as possible, so we can continue and get it done, I mean, I think she's been, Katrina, what was your year anniversary?
July seventh.
The other thing is that the email also indicated that the town administrator not know it was tonight, so I would like to make sure that, because it's all connected to personnel board, and we're all trying to work, and I think it's important, it would be very informative, we'd be, our communication is really good, and that's a really formal process, you know, it's done. I want to make sure as chairman that I don't make any mistakes, to be honest.
I think it has to be the twenty-first, because I can't come the seventh.
What about this, in the same meeting? That would be the next time we meet, I guess I'm trying to push it. I keep forgetting, it's already so late in July.
Twenty-fourth, I can't decide.
I mean, July is almost, next week is already almost, that's last...
No, two more weeks.
But I mean, it's only a half week yet.
Yeah, and so on, one Wednesday.
We can do it the twenty-first, it's done in one night, and then it goes, man, it goes directly.
You're talking about August twenty-first?
Yeah.
I won't be here.
That doesn't help. You aren't here August twenty-first, then why do we make that meeting?
You can function without making it?
No, not a public hearing. I mean, not on a hearing, not for a site plan review.
Really?
No, no.
Want to go back to the seventeenth then, is that what the original date is?
Actually...
I'm not having, no. Why would I have a meeting when you're not here?
We need you, Katrina.
Let's move to the fourteenth. That was an earlier...
That's the original date, wasn't it? Seventeenth or what?
Seventeenth was the original... No.
Yeah, fourteen, fourteen.
Fourteen.
Of what?
August.
That's okay.
Are you here then?
I'm trying to see when I need to get it in the paper.
No, it's not, it's not in the paper.
Did you have the matter asked in a table?
The other one has to be in the paper.
Oh, are we, so that's going to be an extra meeting on top of August twenty-first?
No, we're not doing the twenty-first, we haven't.
Okay, so I do have to get it in the paper?
Switch back to the fourteenth, make it script system out.
Right.
Yes, but you can do that, but...
Fourteenth.
You have enough information to get it in the paper by the end of this week?
Yeah, we can get it out.
And if you get it in by the end of this week, then it's more than enough time. All right, so that's the fourteenth, we're going to do the performance evaluation, you have the forms, you review it, and just, we'll have that discussion, and we'll just get that done, all right? I think it's important in behalf of, you know, what the board, the bottom line is that, you know, as chairman, I mean, I think everybody would agree that I couldn't function as chairman without having a plan.
Especially if they're, they should go on to the job.
Yes, I could, I don't know, but certainly, the amount of information that's mixed up. I think it makes the meetings a lot easier. I don't know how Cliff did it for ten or fifteen years, he had a job, no? Cliff had to do all the information himself, and I think now we have the information...
So, so what, I understand directly that, figure out that, pardon, when will we have the executive session to fill out the evaluation?
It's up to the employee being evaluated to waive the executive session, then every aspect of the process, it'll be public here if they wish to come, the discussion of the details of what needs to be, on the performance evaluation is our guideline, that's our public. And that gets discussed public as a board, we come up with the scores that the board agrees with, and then we can fill it out in public, seal it, send it in, if, if the person being evaluated says that that's okay.
When would you like me to waive my rights?
Can do it that time.
Do I do it tonight?
No. Well, because we just saw on the agenda. Per se, I would rather, you know, we know how you lead, and you can say it publicly that if you want to waive the right, I mean, I think, I mean, that's open, like, the town administrator had an open evaluation with the selectmen, and she waived her right, it was just an open thing. I think Katrina, you feel the same there. It's no problem, and then we just get it done like that, you know, fill it out. I mean, executive sessions, the state gets, getting a little more hairy in terms of what's public and what's not.
Minutes.
Minutes, minutes. Correspondents, do you have any?
The meeting I missed.
Because I skipped around so much, correspondence has kind of been discussed.
I didn't include correspondence, because I'm trying to cut down on the amount I did to you, but I did summarize it under correspondence. We received some notices from different towns, one from Ipswich for a yogurt shop, and we were to rebuild a safety home on Plum Island.
Thank you. Along with the interesting things on zoning.
I also did just receive requests to send the memo to the selectmen, which I have finished, and I don't have here, but there's going to be a bicycle race, bicycle cross race at Grandview Farm, up on Manchandra, Tomleys, and they're asking the selectmen permission, and they're just asking input from all the towns.
Motocross?
No, bicycle cross.
VX.
I guess you, parts of the race, you put the bike on your shoulder and run up hills.
Oh, one of those? Triathlon with bikes?
Yeah, so they, you know, I guess they're looking, you know, the police and fire have already civilian comments, because it is on a dead-end road in Kittery, Manchur, and there's going to be nine hundred participants, while parking somewhere up there, there's going to be parking on the farm.
Well, they got a show.
They got a show at the railroad station, too.
They can park at the Moos, another show. Sounds interesting. Do we have to get any permission?
No, not at all.
So that's an FYI, that's an FYI kind of thing?
Yes.
All right, all right, the minutes?
Katrina, I have a question about the A and R plan for West Oxford Patrick, in reference to part that pertains to me. Says Pierce answers that a one-lot subdivision does seem too much.
That doesn't make any sense either.
I don't think I said that, but was that in your notes, I mean?
Oh, that came from the conversation really afterwards, to summarize it.
I remember...
Because you, I said, did we actually tell him to come up with a roadway improvement plan, and, or maybe he told me that he had said, no, maybe he said that.
He said during the meeting, I remember him saying, right as he was leading, he said that doing the subdivision plan is going to be over the top or something like that.
Maybe that's just not...
So I didn't say, yeah, right, but I did say, I think, I think I would have said, you know, we'll consider a roadway improvement plan, you want to give us?
Right, because I think it's more appropriate for the state, so we were adding that work.
Oh, yeah.
Pierce answers that...
I think you say Pierce has said he was open to discussing a roadway improvement plan.
Okay.
Because we were looking for ways, and you read the fact, there's already been one input from the town council on July, and everybody had that one? So you can read that, Katrina did a really nice email to Debbie E. to describe, you know, this, what the board is trying to deal with here.
And town council after that also is...
So Katrina, to communicate with the selectmen, you know, she's been keeping the communication lines open, I also asked her to do that, like, summarizing these difficult things that we deal with in the meetings. So it's a great, and then town council already wrote back on July tenth, Julie Pickett, about this, West Oxford Patrick. They should probably not throw it, right?
It sounds like the applicant disagrees.
Yeah, yeah, disagrees, I don't think she would.
When the board does finally, when it gets to the point, Larry Crane is actually reviewing the rules and regulations changes that I made with the help of a bunch of different suggestions from different people. He's looking at that now, but he may want to entertain roadway improvement plans, but it sounds like they're only used for when there's an old subdivision that was created before the adoption of subdivision control, like paper streets, things for, you know, really just paper streets they're used for. Possibly like something like Glenway though, too. Although that was a...
Yeah.
Right away?
Yeah, that was, that was for like the business, that's not the one, business, the residence. That was a specific case where someone wanted to accomplish two things, or they've been there for a long time. One thing, if you go to the end, yes, for, right, at the end of the Moos thing, the end of the event, Brian asks when Markie Baskett proposed to construct a fence against all this given, is it parallel proposals to?
Brian asks when Markie Baskett proposed.
This is Grandma Ashby, that's what I'm asking. We'll discuss that thing.
Or, oh, asked, okay. You just want the past?
Well, just keep it as present, asks when it proposes, just instead of proposed, it just proposed.
Yeah, so that's right.
It's just a grammatical thing, isn't it? Is there any outside, so much change, so Cliff's? It was pretty straightforward, and that's what, that meeting was, you know, we had a time, but I did, it was the same issues that we've been discussing for weeks, seven. The motion to vote in the end, is it?
I'll make the motion.
I'll send him.
Second by G., all's a fair...
Aye.
Something that's related...
It's abstaining because of those...
That's right, thanks. Yeah, I want to just mention, and one thing just kind of related to this, Katrina asked for the Hox, the White's Lane, Hoxworth Estate to come up with more money, they're a little bit short, right?
Yeah.
So just to finish up, because Larry, they're trying to get final...
I think he only, he said the thousand dollars. I asked for five thousand more, both from Raleigh Village Green and residences at probably country club that were getting low, the money held for those. I've been heard back from Hoxworth, I don't know if they'll have a problem.
That was on like five hundred bucks, like four ninety-four.
Yeah, they're in arrears right now, so we need...
We're trying to not have people be in arrears, so we're asking us to sign off and get the vote accepted.
Yes.
We've had problems with that in the past, and it always comes to bite us.
Sure.
We're also waiting for Larry's estimate for she and state, because we really have to get going on that, and so...
You're still waiting for that?
Yeah, he said that he promised he'd have it by the end of July, but I have to set up a meeting with town council and the town administrator, so we can sit down and really talk about how we're going to do this. Because we don't know yet if we do have a full town meeting, do we take the bond at the same time as we accept the street, because we can't really do the work on the street if we don't own it. So I think we will have to accept the street undone while we take the bond, I think that's how it's done.
But if it's already official, I think that's...
Then we can turn the lights on.
It's kind of a sad thing, the lights are still on. How much is owed?
Oh, three hundred dollars.
I think we need to move on, and so we got to get Larry, so I want to get what he needs to do there. I think the issue is that it had to be different than the normal estimates he was for, because he was trying to get it done in a more, a cheaper way, but because of the law, it has to be done.
Actually, they're going to set up a date and telling him that we're meeting on this date, so you need to get it done by...
Tell him a week before I make the meeting.
Well, we can't wait till August, we really have to start moving on this, we need to get sign-offs, the fee simple sign-offs or something from all the people on the street.
Right, because they owe to the middle of the street.
So, there's a lot to do before it goes on the warrant, it goes on the warrant, the deadline is going to be October, September, and we'll be there.
You want to, at least put it on the agenda for next year?
Okay.
Because that will push Larry to... All right, any other issues?
No.
The motion to adjourn. Thank you. Second.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.